Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order and recess for two minutes. Good evening. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission are appointed by the City Council and the County Board of Commissioners to make recommendations to the elected officials. We emphasize that the elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. While this meeting is being conducted in person, it is also accessible using the Zoom virtual meeting platform. The virtual meeting platform, in the virtual meeting platform, public participants do not have the ability to talk or be seen on video by default. In order to maintain meeting decorum and a discernible record of the meeting, the chat function has been disabled. For those attending in person, if you plan to speak on an agenda item tonight, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. When speaking, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak directly into the microphone. If you are attending the meeting virtually, you will be given the ability to speak at the appropriate time. If you have pre-registered, your name will be called so you can make comments just like an in-person public hearing. You may also call in during the meeting tonight by dialing 1-301-715-8592. If you call in during the meeting time, you will need to wait until the particular public hearing you are interested in starts. After all of the pre-registered speakers have shared their comments, I will ask if there is anyone else wishing to speak. At that point, you will need to digitally raise your hand by pressing *9 on your phone. And when recognized, state your name and address before making your comments. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes for a presentation. Each speaker after the applicant has two minutes to speak. Commissioners, we have five minutes for Q and A and will only be called upon to speak a second time after all of the other commissioners have chosen to speak for a first time. Please have your thoughts and questions organized. Commissioners, as a reminder, after the public hearing is closed, you obtain the floor by being recognized by the chair. Commission members, please remember you share this time with your fellow commissioners. Keep your comments and questions pithy and please don't repeat topics that have already been discussed or questioned. The time to make all public statements is before motions are made. Once a motion is on the floor and further discussion regarding that motion must come after a second. All motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Commissioners, if you are not ready to move a case forward, please indicate as such when questioned. Finally, I ask everyone here and on the Zoom, the commission members, the staff, the public, to conduct themselves in a courteous and respectful manner. This means, I'm sorry, this means if your case is in your favor, please don't clap and if it's not, please don't moan. If a lot of you are here for one case and you want to go out in the hallway after, please do so quietly and just close the doors when you come back so we can continue our business. If someone fails to act in any disrespectful manner, the chair will ask the offending person or persons to leave the room or to be muted on Zoom until such time they gain personal control. If decorum fails to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until genuine commitment to act respectful and courteous is observed. After the case, I said that already. All right, so, thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Cameron.
Here.
Vice Chair Shigares.
Here.
Commissioner Cutwright.
Here.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Gregory.
Commissioner Huen.
Here.
Commissioner Kopack. Commissioner McIver. Commissioner Piantak.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Woke.
Here.
We have established a quorum.
Thank you. There are no adjustments to the agenda.
I'm sorry, Chair, there is an adjustment.
Is there? Okay.
There is an adjustment to the agenda. Due to a request by the applicant, Case Z2400020, Methodist Street Townhouses, has been returned back to staff for further review and it will likely be on your April Planning Commission agenda.
All right, thank you. All righty, we don't need to vote on the agenda, do we?
No, you don't need to vote on the agenda, but I would like to just make a note that we do have a new commissioner. Commissioner Piantak has joined us and we appreciate you. We do just want to make a general announcement. We do still have three vacancies on the commission, so if anybody watching online or on TV or sitting down here and you don't like your view from down there and you'd like to have a top row view from up here, please coordinate with either the city or the county clerks to finish, fill one of those three vacancies. We would greatly appreciate it.
All right, item number four on the agenda is the approval of the minutes and consistency statements. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's their second.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutwright and seconded by Commissioner Williams to approve the minutes and the consistency statements. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. The ayes have it. At this time, I would like our new commissioner, Commissioner Piantak, to just introduce herself very quickly.
Good evening all. Corey Piantak, I've been a Durham resident for about seven years now. Background in healthcare and health and human services, so currently a management consultant here in Durham. So happy to be part of the commission.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to the first, no, initial zoning map change. May we have the staff report, please? That is Case Z240008A Romero Residence.
Hi, good evening Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigares and Planning Commissioners. My name is Peyton Burgess and I am here to present Case Z248A BDG 245 Romero Residence. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law and affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. The following information summarizes the application. This is a direct translational zoning request associated with a non-contiguous annexation located at 213 Shear Avenue. The parcel is zoned residential suburban 20 with a Falls-Jordan District B watershed overlay and is designated established residential on the place type map. The request would allow the applicant to connect to water and sewer for the construction of a single-family dwelling unit. Again, the existing zoning is residential suburban 20 and there is no proposed change to this zoning. The site is surrounded by the same with rural residential and planned development residential 4.166 nearby. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. The property is currently designated established residential on the place type map. The proposed zoning was determined consistent with the designated place type. A neighborhood meeting was not required for this request and no Durham Rezoning Explorer comments were received by staff in relation to this case. The proposal is consistent with the place type map designation of established residential. The proposal is also consistent with four of five applicable comprehensive plan policies with the inconsistent policy being regarding the non-contiguous nature of the annexation. And staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have a sign up sheet for this? Thank you, sir. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. Is the applicant available? Are they online? We have, I don't know if that's the applicant online or not. No, don't know. Is that the applicant? Okay.
That's me?
Yep, you're up.
Hi, yeah, a little backstory on the lot and why I'm calling for the annexation. So I bought the property about five years ago. When it was listed, the listing agent was doing a subdivision to the property I was not aware of. And I did recall that they did not do the rezoning, well, the subdivision, but the owner insisted that they wanted to do it and unfortunately, he passed away when we were under contract. So I didn't want to terminate the contract. I went through the closing after they recorded the lot, new dimension, and unfortunately, when they did that, it was not considered part of Chapter 70, something along the line, where it was no longer assessed to the water and sewer. Unfortunately for me, this is not a lot that I'm looking to develop to sell. I already sold it to a client. And the reason why I'm doing this on his behalf is because I did not do my due diligence on, well, unfortunately, I was not aware until after I applied that I was not able to assess to the water and sewer. So because the lot is too small for a septic and a well and the house and impervious surface, the only option I had in order to develop this property for my client was to annex into the city.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Is there anyone else on the Zoom that would like to speak towards this case?
No, ma'am.
You're good. All right, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. We are now open for Commissioner discussion and questions. Anyone? Are we ready to move this case forward? May I have a motion?
Chair, as it relates to Case Z240008A and Annexation BDG 240005 Romero Residence, I make a motion that we move this case forward with a favorable recommendation to City Council.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutwright and seconded by Commissioner Williams to move Case Z240008A BDG 240005 Romero Residence forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Excuse me, Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigares.
Yes.
Commissioner Cutwright.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Huen. Commissioner Piantak.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Woke.
Yes.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. We are moving on to Agenda Number Six. Agenda Items Number Six, Public Hearings, Zoning Map Changes. The first case we have is Z230011 BDG 23007 Howard Property. May we have the staff report, please?
There it goes, okay. Yes, as you said, this is Case Z230011 Howard Property. This case is on NC 98 east of Kemp Road. The existing zoning is residential suburban 20 and residential rural. The proposed zoning is Planned Development Residential 5.783 for up to 499 dwelling units and up to 12,000 square feet of commercial space. The site is surrounded by low-density residentially zoned land in an area that has large undeveloped tracts and single-family housing. The aerial map shows residential development to the north and west. A school has been approved immediately west of the site and land to the south has been approved for residential development, but construction has not yet begun. The property is currently designated mixed-use neighborhood and resident, I'm sorry, recreation and open space on the place type map. The eastern edge of the site abuts the urban growth boundary with land designated for rural and agricultural reserve to the east. These are the primary land use commitments in the proposal. Transportation commitments are outlined in the staff report. Two neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with policy and five Durham Rezoning Explorer comments have recently been made in relation to this case. They were not available at the time the staff report went into the agenda. The proposal is consistent with the place type map designation of mixed-use neighborhood and recreation of an open space due to the non-residential commitment as part of the proposal, but no commitment to preserve the recreation and open space has been provided. The proposal meets all UDO requirements. And with that, that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing and the applicant is at the podium.
Thank you Chair, good evening Commissioners. My name is Dan Jewell. I'm a landscape architect, Regional Director of Thomason-Hutton. Our office is at 2510 Meridian Parkway and I live at 1025 Gloria Avenue, just about six blocks in that direction. Since we submitted the application almost two years ago now, there have been several significant things that have happened. One is that you are all aware in late 2023, the City Council and the County Commissioners adopted the new comprehensive plan, which had been in the works since late 2019. The creation of that comprehensive plan was probably the most involved process I have witnessed in my 40 years of being involved in Durham. One of the most robust public discussions was around establishing a new urban growth boundary. In other words, particularly in eastern Durham County, where water and sewer should be allowed and growth happen and where it should not. And one of the other largest areas of discussion was around housing. As Durham has been experiencing a housing shortage for a decade now, a housing shortage that has contributed to a very high cost of the available housing, we need to be thinking about where, what type and how much housing should be built. I attended dozens of these meetings over the four-year period. When this zoning request was submitted, we were fairly confident that we would check the boxes that the comp plan was looking for and it so happened that that did turn out. To sum up a few of those key points in the comp plan, this property is within the urban growth limits. Water and sewer is already nearby and easily extended to this new neighborhood. The place type map component of the comprehensive plan calls for this property to be mixed-use neighborhood. To paraphrase from the comp plan, a mixed-use neighborhood should incorporate a dense, walkable mix of housing types, including, among other things, apartments, townhomes, single-family homes, and we are proposing just that. And we have committed to providing all three of those types of housing through our text commitments. The comp plan further states for this place type that there should be centrally located non-residential uses provided within these neighborhoods, easily accessible within a 15-minute walk or shorter of the residence. And we are in fact, as you'll see, committing to a non-residential commercial component as part of this project and that would be located within a 15-minute walk or less of all of the new residences. Further, we note that at your last meeting, I believe you recommended approval of a rezoning request at the corner of Kemp Road and NC 98 for a commercial development. And that is exactly directly adjacent to our site, to the west and northwest. And of course, that would be within a 15-minute walk of most of the property as well. We're also committing to an affordable housing component for all of the unit types, not just one or the other, as well as a contribution to the Durham Public Schools Fund. Most importantly, we've had fairly continuous neighborhood engagement, particularly over the last four months. Yes, we had the two required virtual neighborhood meetings, but we also had an additional virtual neighborhood meeting early in the fall to bring the neighbors up to date. And we had one in-person meeting at the Oak Grove Ruatang Club that I thank the neighbors for organizing, where we were able to meet in person, answer questions, things of that nature. And just a few weeks ago, I hosted a meeting at my office with some of the leadership of the Preserve Rural Durham folks. We've listened to the concerns of the neighbors and made adjustments to our proposals as best we could to address some of those concern. The most impactful early adjustment was when this application was originally submitted, we were proposing 650 units, over seven and a half units to the acre. We're now proposing a maximum of 499 units and 5.78 units per acre, so roughly a 25% reduction in density. We know that one of the primary concerns of the residents of the neighborhood is increasing traffic from new development. We get it, there is additional traffic. There will be additional traffic from any new residential or project that's approved. But even though that was one of the main drivers, that discussion of traffic that established the urban growth boundary as part of the comprehensive plan, we also wanted to do our part to mitigate the traffic based on the concerns of the neighbors. One of the ways to mitigate was the reduction in density by the number of units that we did. That inherently reduces the number of trips. And we're also committing to a dozen off-site road improvements that will be done either solely by us or in conjunction with some other developments that have some of the same conditions attached. It'll probably be a first come, first served basis. That's the way it works in Durham. And those represent millions of dollars in road improvements. We also heard from the neighbors' concerns about buffering from the adjacent established residents who front on 98 and preserving the visual character of Highway 98. To that end, we have now incorporated text commitments that are in your package to provide a 30-foot landscape buffer along all the properties that front on 98 that back up to this proposed rezoning. And we've also committed to a 30-foot no-build and no-parking setback along the Highway 98 frontage. And recently, based on the meeting I had in my office a few weeks ago with some of the folks here in the audience today, we feel it's appropriate to modify our commitment to the greenway through now committing to actually build that trail, not actually providing that easement. So we will build a substantial section of city greenway trail from Highway 98 to the south end of the property. We also are in agreement with one of the neighborhood concerns that any of the apartment buildings not be close to their homes. So we are committing to a 200-foot minimum building setback from those apartments to any of those adjacent established residential neighborhoods to the north and the east. And also, we are committing to, because we noticed in the staff report there's some concern about whether we're truly sincere about making a walkable neighborhood, we're committing that all of the uses, including commercial and residential with a neighborhood, will be connected with either sidewalks and/or greenway trails. And at the appropriate time, after my remarks, I can read the exact proposed wording into the record for Mr. Kane. I did provide a copy of that to him this morning, so he has that. So to summarize, we think we are creating the type of neighborhood envisioned for this location by the comprehensive plan, are providing the much-needed housing of various types and income levels that Durham desperately needs, including workforce housing, will be building a great public amenity through the construction of the greenway trail and are being as respectful to the neighbors as we can with denser reduction, landscape buffers, Highway 98 setbacks and committing to not building apartment buildings proximate to their properties. I would leave you with this thought, though. The other significant thing that's happened since we submitted this zoning application nearly two years ago, you're all well aware that the Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO, is being rewritten. As part of that rewrite, every parcel in Durham will be rezoned to new zoning districts, including this one. The latest proposed zoning for this property is RD. RD, as currently written, would allow up to eight and a half units to the acre by right with no affordable housing provision. In fact, you can get more density if you do provide affordable housing. So that would be roughly 730 units opposed to the 499 that we are currently proposing, about a 46 increase in the density that we hope that you will recommend approval of tonight. We think that recommending approval of our request will provide the right balance between the need for housing, meeting the goals of the comprehensive plan and still providing some mitigation for the ongoing neighborhood concerns out there of new development. And it's certainly the project that we would like to build. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dan, yeah. Regarding the three new proffers that you made, I don't think we need to necessarily read them all out verbatim at this point. The sidewalks and the connections to sidewalks and greenway trails, that's pretty clear. The 200-foot... The 200-foot setback for the apartment buildings, I think, is clear. I just want to specify, based on what you had sent me earlier today for the paved greenway trail, it would be a 50-foot easement rather than a 100-foot easement, which is currently what is committed, but you would be committing to actually constructing the greenway, where previously it was a 100-foot easement but with no construction, and that it would be completed prior to receiving the 200th residential certificate of compliance.
Exactly right. You got that. And just to add a little color to that, we have designed most of the existing greenway trails in Durham, and you certainly need a 100-foot easement if you don't know where the trail's going to go quite yet. But the fact that we will actually be building the trail, we can put a 50-foot easement centered on it, and that'll be more than sufficient. So thank you for that, Erin, and thank you all for your time. I'll be here for questions.
Thank you. So the group with the PowerPoints, are you all together, like every single person? Okay. So you want to go get set up and then line up, and then we'll start the clock after that?
Okay. I'm our property. Control, yeah? Thank you. Thanks for being here. Yeah, I've done enough times. Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Pamela Andrews, Wake Forest Highway. We appreciate the three neighborhood meetings with Mr. Jewell, we sincerely do, and the new proffers, but there are concerns that still exist. As you can see in this immediate vicinity, there are several developments around Howard's Place, along with a new charter school being built. Can we please leave that image up?
Yeah, let's get your PowerPoint set up. Okay. All right. Let's go.
I'm sorry? Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right. It's just important for the picture. So in the immediate vicinity, there are several developments around Howard's Place, along with the new charter school, as you can see in the image. Southeast Durham is in a crisis for many reasons. Howard's Place has seven creeks with sediment pollution, or we call tomato soup. This parcel touches the critical watershed. The natural heritage land is there. The wildlife corridor and open space area is there, as well as there are two protected species. Two recorded occurrences in the protected species were located within one mile of this property in the middle Litt Creek bottomlands. Traffic is a crisis, too. An accident last Friday shut down Highway 98 for 12 hours, tying up our emergency personnel. Our emergency responders are extremely short-staffed, as you will see. The schools are over capacity as well. Durham is in a sediment pollution crisis. Masquerading, clearcutting, blasting is causing sediment pollution in our streams, wetlands in Falls Lake. Features I want to point out on this slide, the property touches the critical watershed. Seven streams on site. We're still waiting on the official stream delineation from the Army Corps of Engineers to know which streams need to be mitigated. Wetlands are present. The FEMA flood plain was present, which follows Litt Creek into Falls Lake, one mile. 160-foot utility lines will be used as open space. 43% of the comprehensive plan policies were not met. Last slide. The report is from the N C D E Q in 2022. The streams are marked A through G, so you can see them. Five of the seven are identified as intermittent with two epheral. All of them flow into Litt Creek, which is identified on the 303D list of impaired streams. About a mile away, it deposits into Falls Lake, which is polluted with traffic basin soil from the 19-plus sites that are being developed. I ask you to please, don't clearcut, don't masquerade, don't blast another site. We are in a crisis in southeast Durham. Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Okay, my name is Jacob Freeman, and my address is on file. This slide's been shown many times before that shows the aftermath of rain events in the Litt Creek watershed with existing development and the visible results of sediment flowing to Falls Lake. I'll reiterate again, as is done in the past, we don't believe Durham County's policy 86 from the Comprehensive Development Plan, which seeks to ensure protection of water sources for adjacent counties, is being met. As can be seen from this slide, the sediment-laden water from Litt Creek flowing into Falls Lake does not meet the requirement from this policy. Keep in mind, this picture is from January 2024. Before other development, high-density land disturbance activities have taken place. Perry Farm, one of the recent annexed tracts of land, has not had any disturbance taken place yet. This development, Howard's Place, is very close to the critical watershed. I'd like to emphasize, the critical watershed has a name for that reason. It's the most sensitive areas directly adjacent to the bodies of water to protect the health of those waters. Also, regarding Durham's updated sedimentation erosion ordinance was effective April 11, 23, we'd expect the city to perform an efficacy study to understand the impact of implementation of these changes, specifically with regard to how water retention basins are designed and used, especially with regard to flocculants and waiting periods to pump the basin after rain events. This slide here shows an aerial view of the Falls Lake from Google Maps. The image also shows sediment-laden waters from Litt Creek flowing to Falls Lake. What's really interesting about this image, if you look at this when compared to others, something's different. It's our belief that the ongoing high-density development activities are not meeting the requirements of N C Administrative Code for Stormwater Management. Reviewing the code in the section shown on the slide, it's unclear of the current development activities and any future in the watershed area will meet these requirements when you consider the sediment-laden water you see flowing into the lake in these two previous pictures. This situation would undoubtedly get worse as more land is clear-cut, masqueraded, and permanently lost to high-density impervious surface. So I'm going to skip this because I think this was part of the proffer.
Is this yours? Yeah. Oh, that is, okay. Good evening, Chairperson Cameron and Planning Commission. I'm Donna Stenbeck of 4825 Jimmy Rogers Road in Durham, North Carolina, approximately four miles from this site. I'm against this proposal. As the map shows, this site impacts the eastern Durham open space plan buffer. This area is consistent with the area shown as recreation and open space. The applicant has not committed to prohibiting development in this area. Also, protected species are located within one mile of the property and reported to the development team in 2022. Additional recommended aquatic surveys were not conducted. The Spangler Environmental Incorporated document analysis said, should impacts to these habitats be proposed, additional investigation is recommended. It was not done. Previous published results indicate two recorded occurrences of rare protected species, the Carolina daughter, let me see, and the dissected toothwort. The Carolina daughter is a fish, and the toothwort is a plant in the area of the streams in the project area. This additional investigation to find the little fish and plant was not done, and it was recommended. Spangler Environmental Incorporated visited the project area in 2021 and 2022 to determine the rare and protected species and to look in their database. They published a report in 2022. This chart shows that part of Howard property that's outlined, and the purple-red slashed area in the southwest corner in the middle Litt Creek bottomlands is in the National Heritage Program protected area, near the center of the circle there. Also, the... Okay.
Good afternoon. My name's Pam Wens. I am, my address is on file. Oops. I want to show you the traffic that we have to deal with out here, every single day of the week, and my voice is changing the slides for me. Okay, NC 98, as you can see on the bottom right-hand corner. NC 98 on the upper left, at Neil, every single day, and then, I am so sorry, I don't know what's going on. Must be my magnetism. But, and then the Patterson Road. This is the issues we deal with. The traffic here, I am, okay. This site is, again, another example of rapid expansion in the Durham city, going to rural area, characterized by high-density residential, high impervious, minimum tree coverage, no 15 neighborhood walking, and it's car-centric. Again, we don't know what those commercial areas are going to be at the corner of Kemp or on this property, so how could we call it a 15-minute neighborhood to get food or coffee or wash a car? I am opposed to development as proposed. This development does not meet five policies as in transportation. One of them says it's meet, and I challenge that, Policy 72, which says it dedicates right-of-way to sidewalks. This is 55 miles per hour, a highway. If they don't put in a 25-foot buffer, then they can't dedicate that or cause that a proffer because complete streets require that, and also B-PAC required it. Required it. Okay, the capacity of 98 right now is 15,000. Okay? The, well, that's, N C D O T's count is 15,082. The capacity is 14,600, as per N C D O T for suburban, other major thoroughfares. I don't know where the 17,000 came from in the report, in the zoning report. In the previous, it came from a Florida D O T table, but this is North Carolina. We have hills here. We have hills here. This area, as shown on the right, is the 19 developments that the TIA took into place, and over 56,000 additional vehicles per day will be in this area. I hope you had opportunity to review the PowerPoint presentation I sent out last night. And again, I don't know why this is changing without me touching it. Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Mike Andrews, and I live on Wake Forest Highway. I have lived there all of my life. I'm 67 years old, and my main concern needs to be addressed. We have spoken with N C D O T and the state engineers about the amount of traffic and the accidents that have been in this location. There have been 13 over the last two years, which are not low-impact, they're high-speed traffic accidents. I will use this illustration. If you've ever been going down I-95 and you cross over a bridge, and then once you get on the other side of the bridge, traffic has stopped and cars are going every which way. That's what happens in this stretch of Highway 98, because there are two locations that are blank spots. One location that Mr. Jewell has identified is on the ingress to the property, which is right on the crest of a hill, and the other, for the egress coming out, which is going to be a right turn, which is going to send all the traffic back towards Wake Forest or eastbound, is going to throw additional traffic. Just last Friday, we had a major accident involving a tractor-trailer rig visiting a business out on Howard 98, and had it not been for the alertness of the tractor-trailer driver to avoid the vehicle they had or was attempting to avoid rear-ending a vehicle, we would have had a fatality there. That truck driver took it in his own life and went off down an embankment, down an easement, but there's high speed on Highway 98, and it happens every day. It's like, well, I want to get one car in front of you, and it's speed away. And it's very dangerous for this location, it's very dangerous for the residents that live there that are trying to get out of their own property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah Andrews, and I live on Wake Forest Highway, very close to where this project is proposed. 98 is not a flat road. It has hills and dips, and you can't always see what's coming over the hill. I'm very frustrated because I've lived out here my whole life, and it's to the point I cannot even get out of my driveway, whether I want to go right or I want to go left. Most times, I've got to go the opposite way I want to go, just to be able to turn around and get in the flow of traffic going the other way. If I want to leave going toward Wake County, a lot of times I'll go down and go down Southview and turn up Kemp, or sometimes I'll get on Carpenter Pond and have to go up to Olive Ranch before I can get back into the flow of traffic. It's a very dangerous highway. People do not obey the speed limits out there. They pass on hills, and it's nothing for you to be looking at your window, and somebody's passing somebody going up a hill doing probably 70, 80 miles an hour. It's a very dangerous highway, and we just, as residents out there, we need some help. It's a very dangerous highway. You know, several years ago, before our parents passed away, my mom had been to my house, and this foregot so bad, she pulled out on 98. There wasn't a car at the time coming, but she pulled out, and a car topped the hill and wound up hitting her as she was pulling out into the highway. You know, I don't know what the answer is, but something needs to be done, you know, for the residents that live out there and also the people that drive this highway on a daily basis. And we get a lot of traffic from Wake County, Wake County coming into Durham, and Durham going to Wake County. It's bumper-to-bumper. So, you know, we just really need some help. It's a dangerous highway.
Thank you.
Tammy Suela on Baptist Road. I first want to start out thanking Mr. Jewell. He's been very collaborative. He did listen to the citizens, and I do appreciate this. But as a person that lives on Baptist Road, there are some facts that you can't deny. And the first one I want to talk about is the first responders. What you're seeing here is a graph that was done in March 2024 that was asked by the city manager. There's a safety practice that there's two in and two out. Well, right now, our firefighters can't meet it with only three people per shift. Also, I want to share the 2024 run totals. E8, that's Fire Station 8, is on 98 Highway. This station does not have a ladder truck, which is needed and is required for apartments, schools, you've got Durham Charter Schools being built, and townhomes. The new fire station for southeast Durham is not in the capital improvement plan. The other fire station that would service this area is E17, which is on Leesville Road, and they have high capacity as well. The police are also in a crisis. The closest police station to this area is seven miles. And what we're also creating is there's pockets of city, and who services whose county and who is in the city. So there's also a lot of confusion of who responds to who. And lastly, I want to talk about the EMS crisis, which concerns me the most. This is just a few days, and as you know, Jerry Ray monitors the system. We had to have Person Counties come respond. We had to have Wake County respond, and they were 25 minutes away. This is going to affect every one of you. If you call EMS and we don't have the capacity, it may be your life that's in danger next. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rebecca Freeman, and my address is on file, and I want to speak to you about the medical issues that are facing Durham. The medical facility capacity is at risk. That's one of the other wraparound services that's needed for population increases. With between 2021 and 23, Durham's population increased by about 680 people. I'm sorry, 6,800 people. Planning for the needs of increased populations is critical to establishing healthy, functioning communities. Are medical facilities increasing their capacity to meet the demands of the population increase? I'm sure you've probably had the experience of going to, with somebody, or hearing somebody going to the emergency room and having to wait hours and hours and hours and hours, or getting admitted and having to wait in a bed to wait for a bed. So that is a great issue. Are medical facilities increasing their capacity to meet demands of the population increase, not only for Durham, for adjacent counties? A lot of people come in from out of county to our hospitals in Durham. Do Durham officials collaborate with critical service providers that healthy populations need? The next one is our schools, and as you can see here, no. Yeah, schools. As you can see here, the school capacity is an issue. If we were looking at just the, what is this added enrollment will be, the school capacity for all these schools will be up in the 90 percentile. capacity for all these schools will be up in the 90 percentile. But if we add just six of the 19 planned developments throughout that area, it goes up into 2,000, 206 to 114 and 106.5 over capacity. Another thing I want to talk about with schools is that the developer commits to contributing $932 per student for 44 students to schools totaling $41,000. In Durham Public Schools, the true cost per student is 105,374 for 44 students. That's $4,636,456. That's 404,000, $4.6 million short. The taxpayers end up paying for that as well as stream restoration.
Thank you.
What did you hit? Does? No, I didn't have a slide of that. I don't know. I've got too much electricity or something today.
Okay. Yes. Don't let her touch it.
Yeah, I know. We're gonna start moving on it. Hi, I'm on to Alan and my address is on file. I personally want to say from being in the building industry, the goal when you're developing is always to create a community that improves the quality of life for the individuals that are going to live in that community as well as for the neighbors. We in this community have met three ti- have met, attended three neighborhood meetings with Dan with the goal of working together and to build a viable environmental community. On the screen here, you will see some proffers that we have asked Dan to handle or asked the developer to handle. The proffers that have come in that you see in your documentation are minimum, minimum UDO requirements. Due to the time limit that I have, I would just like to group these into order. Number one through three, tree buffers and mature trees. We're asking for a 30 foot undisturbed buffer with mature trees. Refrosting 30 foot buffer, leave existing trees, mature trees along the buffer. The second item is number four through six, protect our largest investment and our privacy. No apartments or townhomes. We ask for no townhomes to be placed along the row of ranches, houses to allow for privacy. No blasting with 100 feet of the property line and no stormwater or retention ponds to drain onto our property. And this is happening today, you guys. We have neighbors that are having to go get lawyers to protect their property. Is something going on? Okay.
12 minutes we're up.
To ensure the, my mercy, excuse me. Man, it goes fast.
Good evening all. My name is Thomas Freeman, lifelong resident of Durham, 45 year resident on Southview Road. My, my role here is to quickly, excuse me, I'm going to try to slow down the pace. You've heard our team throw a lot of data at you and I have 1 minute 49 seconds left. I'll try to slow things down so I can explain to you all, what I propose to do is to summarize what my colleagues have, have said before us. And I'll do this by identifying the program crisis areas. I'll not read, but I'll cobb them out. Population growth, the environmental crisis, the excessive unlawful discharge of sediment from recently annexed county into the city from these residential construction sites, schools over capacity, fire and hospital shortages, policing EMS shortages with 138 police officers short, I might add. Increased accidents, we've already talked about the major collision that occurred just, just Friday that affected all of us. We were out without power till late into the evening. And as with any technical, with any technical program or scientific, everything that we've seen, all the facts, all the figures are primarily from the state of North Carolina or the city of Durham sources. We didn't make this stuff up and they're all properly footnoted in the advanced material that you have seen, that you hopefully have in front of you. And I would add that we're ready and willing to answer all of your questions as they might, as they might come to you. And also very quickly, I would just, I've got to point out that this, the UDO citing open space is absolutely insulting as a property owner in that area. My property is not open space. It's my property that I'm paying tax on, damn it.
Thank you.
Since I had so much problems and everything, can I get 10 seconds?
Sure.
Okay, again, my name is Pam Williams. I would like to call when we have a chance rebuttal or y'all have a chance rebuttal, Robin from the planning department to explain that this is on RB and not RD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Robin.
Next we have Florence Coats.
Good afternoon. I'm Florence Coats. I live on 5818 Wake Forest Road. I've lived there for 51 years and I do, and as Deborah said a while ago, traffic is terrible on 98 Highway. Over morning, traffic is backed up by my house coming from Wake Forest Road sitting in a standstill every morning. And I do not need a lot of blasting going on around my house. I'm too old and I can't afford to repair where damage has been done to my property. We've already had to replace a well where they widened the road and messed our well up. And so I just want things to be, and right now the entryway that they're talking about putting in is only three houses. Well, I'm the third house, but if they put a stoplight there, they're going to have to put a turning lane. If they put a turning lane, it's going to come right in front of my house. I already have a problem getting out. And if I, if they put that there, I don't know when I can get out. It'll be like, take me probably 15, 20 minutes to get out of my driveway. Right now I feel like I'm sitting there at five, but we need all that. I need you to think about all that for our benefits and what it would do to our, our property. And then affect the ones next to me worse than me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cynthia Berryman Hutch? Cindy, I'm sorry, not Cynthia.
Thank you. My name is Cindy Berryman Hutch. I'm at 6012 Wake Forest Highway and my parents moved us down here from Connecticut in 1972. We're the only family that have lived in this residence and I purchased it from my mom's estate when she passed away in 2017. I've lived elsewhere throughout the country, but when I retired, I decided that I would like to move back to Durham because I enjoyed growing up here and, but my, how things have changed. My concerns are the traffic. I don't drive, but people come to pick me up, family members and friends to like go to the grocery store to go shopping, things like that. And they're really hesitant about coming to get me at certain hours. And it's gotten to be where, you know, the traffic is really bad, you know, pretty much any time of the day. And so they're concerned about the turnouts, you know, those are, you know, what the decision is going to be from the development going in because one is going to be fairly close. The extended lane to merge over is going to be fairly close to my driveway. And there's a hill right below my house that I live like in a long stretch where there's no hill. So when they come up the hill, they're flying to pass the vehicles that they were stuck behind coming up the hill. And going to the mailbox, it's just, I have to wait for the traffic to pass. I'm partially blind and so I try to step back and wait for the traffic to clear. But that is a concern for me, not for, you know, most everybody, but I can only speak for myself. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more person on here and you have a very fancy signature that I cannot read whatsoever, but the address is 5612 Wake Forest Road.
She signs up.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this case? All right, is there anyone in the Zoom that would like to speak on this case? Mr. Jewell, you had about a minute left. Do you want to answer any of the questions that the, or concerns that the community brought up?
Thank you for the opportunity. I will make just a few general statements. We, we know there are a few streams on this property. There are not seven jurisdictional streams, but there are some. And certainly between the UDO requirements, the state requirements and the US Army Corps of Engineers requirements, we will be very limited in what, if anything, we can do within those buffers. Furthermore, a couple of the streams have now been identified as intermittent. This work was done well after we submitted the zoning application, by the way. And in the FJB watershed that we are in, because we will be somewhere between 24 and 28% impervious surface, we believe for the projects as a whole, that means the intermittent stream buffers will go up to 100 feet from the normal 50 foot buffer that would be required. So 100 feet plus 100 feet plus 10 feet plus 10 feet of stream. So, you know, there'll be easily 225 foot wide buffers along all the jurisdictional streams in the property. So I'm out of time, but thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Seeing that no one else wanted to speak in the galley or on Zoom, the public hearing is now closed. We are now open for commissioner discussion and questions. Commissioner Cutwright.
Thanks Chair. Mr. Thomas, I think it was, he did a good job of summarizing, stating that there are lots of issues. And I think the point is that this is complicated. Land use has a lot of stakeholders, environmental, schools, traffic. There are a lot of moving parts that go along with this and, and a single development can't solve all these problems. And so what we're tasked with is figuring out whether the existing zoning is better or worse than the proposed zoning. Keeping in mind, in this case in particular, or this time in particular, that we are in the middle of a UDO rewrite, which Mr. Jewell pointed out. So one thing I will say is as you think about all these things and the issues that are coming up, as we're in the middle of a UDO rewrite, I would say, I would ask or hope that you've spent some time in that process, hopefully addressing some of these issues, right? And so as developers are, are coming forth and they're meeting the UDO requirements, they are the UDO requirements. And so it's important to note that your issue is with the UDO requirements, not with the developers that are meeting them. I think we should point that out and, and, and make sure we're clear about how that process works. I think the other thing I'll say is as we think about traffic, Durham is changing, right? It's, it's, it's growing rapidly. It's a changing city and this is what happens when cities change. It won't be the same. It wasn't the same as it was 50 years ago and it'll be very different 50 years from now. And a growing city has lots of traffic. There are some pros and cons to that. More traffic, I don't know. Do more cars slow down on that road? I don't know if that helps or hurts. You know, that's a consideration there. I think the other thing I'll just mention here is with the UDO, with the proposed UDO rewrite, as Mr. Jewell pointed out, there will be the opportunity for a lot more density without affordable housing. And I think this presents an opportunity to capitalize on some affordable housing, you know, in a situation where we wouldn't have that otherwise. So I'll stop there and let some other people state their opinions or thoughts on this case, but it's complicated.
Anyone else? Can you hear one? Yes.
Thank you Chair. First quick question, I guess for staff, if y'all could clarify, I think one of the public commenters said that under the new UDO, the property would be zoned something different than what Mr. Jewell's said. Is that true?
Yeah. Bo DeBrinsky, Plan Department, just to offer a little bit of clarity. So in the original map that was a part of the proposal when we released the zoning districts, the area was shown as RD with a portion as RX3, as the applicant did note. Since then, we have made some changes to the proposed map, which as I think we're all aware, there will be lots of changes throughout this process as we continue to receive feedback and engagement as decision makers pour through all of the information that we continue to gather. One of the changes that staff has made fairly recently is for the proposed RB zoning district that is outside city limits. Many of those areas, we've changed that to be proposed as RB. Now, this is not necessarily consistent with the place type, which is, looks, which is the situation here, but it is to recognize the fact that many of the, the RD that was mapped outside of city limits wouldn't be able to be built at that density without utilities. And so we were creating a situation where there was a whole lot of area that would be practically rezoned to this density that would not be feasible. And then subsequently there would be requests for annexation in, in the future. And so it was, it was a little less transparent. It was decided that we would adjust the proposed zoning map with the RB, which of course was underutilized at that time. Again, this is just, you know, we're still continuing feedback, we're still engaging, right? Like we're only a quarter of the way through the process and, and the project itself. So the applicant was right in terms of referencing the zoning district that aligns with the place type map at the, and as well as the original proposed map. And also it is, it is correct that if you look at the information that, that staff is currently putting out to the community is, is that has been amended. That is, neither of those things were intended to be static as much as, you know, the information at that time. Does that clarify? I know that it's, it's a little bit of a moving target and so that is not intended to be.
Word? What's that? Clarify would be a strong word. I think I'm a little more confused.
Yeah. The, the RD district was applied to this particular place type as that was, was what was most consistent. Thanks, Will.
And then I have a few questions for the applicant, her. See you make your way over. First one is just want to clarify something you said. So y'all are committing to all of the traffic improvements from the TIA, including all the traffic signals that would be needed and all that good stuff.
So I may ask Ms. Thomas to get up and clarify, but we have a dozen improvements that are part of these text, text commitments. Some of those improvements are solely on this project. Some of those improvements this project. Some of those improvements may already be attached to some other zonings that have been in place. So that would then become a first come, first serve, or work, get developers to work together, which we often hope will happen. In the signalization, we, we will be responsible for signalization if and once the warrants exist, and those are determined by NC DOT. I know that's a very confusing term, but perhaps Ms. Thomas can clarify that.
Earlene Thomas, Transportation. So I guess the short answer to your question is yes. They are committing to all of the road improvements. And there are some that are also required of other developments. And whoever gets there first will be required to build it prior to getting certificate of occupancies. I do want to note for the record that the improvements at NC 98 and Olive Branch Road have already been completed by another development. So staff would recommend removing those as text commitments, as they're no longer needed or applicable. And as far as the signals go, Mr. Jewell is correct. There still would need to be a signal warrant analysis done at the time of site plan to see if the signals, if warrants are met. So they have to meet certain established thresholds for the installation of the signal.
Gotcha. And would a similar process happen for the road widening conditions as well?
So those would be required, but at the time of site plan, they would likely submit a traffic phasing analysis to show us what number of COs they can do prior to needing that road improvement. And then they would be phased with the development as it's built out.
Gotcha. Thank you. A few other questions. So you mentioned the new proffer to build the greenway, but I see you're not meeting, like, Policy 83, 85, 79, 81, all of which seems like you would meet if you just committed to preserving that little natural heritage site part on, I think it's the southern portion of the site. I saw your reasoning in the packet was, you don't want to commit to a specific spot yet, but if you already know where you're going to be building this greenway trail, why can't you know where that space would be?
So we know where we're building the greenway trail because there is an adopted greenway master plan. It's actually a layer on the, the, the Durham GIS map. So we know where, where that will go. The, the inventory area, the open space area, is a very coarse map, but we've looked at it, and it is based on stream buffers and potentially some floodplain areas down in the southwest corner of the site, okay? Overlaying the map that one of the speakers showed with the floodplain map, it's, it pretty much coincides with that. And as we all know, Durham does not like us to develop in the floodplain. We will not be developing in a floodplain. So inherently, that area will be preserved and protected from, from development. There's a lot of hoops to jump through. And, and we could commit that we will not be building within that floodplain or stream buffer area down there. That's a UDO requirement.
Gotcha. And then one last quick question, if I can, Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Given the site's proximity to Falls Lake, and with all the streams of whatever classification on site, would y'all be open to a higher stormwater standard than the current UDO requirement of the 10-year storm?
We hadn't really thought about that. We, we originally had a text commitment for double-row silt fence. Since then, it was such a good idea that is now actually adopted as the UDO as a requirement. So I think you can save some, some of the neighbors with that. The other thing that's happened in the last year, and Mr. Kane can probably clarify this, there's been a, a pretty robust change to the phasing and grading and the way development could be done that did not exist when this application. It's cost a lot of, caused a lot of consternation among folks that build more than 20 or 30 homes at a time. But essentially, it says, you can only open up so much of your site at a time before you finish it, pave it, grass it, seed it, stabilize it before you can move on to the next phase. And I, I, I am certain that that pretty strong ordinance change also came out of a lot of the input that you got from the Preserver Durham folks. Aaron may want to clarify just a little bit. So, so at this point, I would have to say, we can't commit to a stronger stormwater requirement, but we think there are already things in place, including this ordinance change, that, that more than make up for that.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can just quickly clarify. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head necessarily, but yes, there are now limits to how much can be graded and phased at one time, or else you trigger a higher tree coverage requirement that nobody generally in the development community wants to do, because it just takes away a larger portion of their site. I did want to, Dan, was that a commitment you were making to not developing the floodplain? I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
Absolutely. So you're, I'm on record with that, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think I'm out of time. Thank you. Commissioner Woke?
Yes, thank you. So thank you for that commitment, because that was my first question. And I just have, Policy 101 commits to native plantings. To me, that's such low-hanging fruit. Is that, so I'm curious as to why that that is not committed to.
That's an excellent question. It comes up a lot, and it doesn't just come up in Durham. We had it on, in Orange County on a project last year. We will always endeavor to do as much native plant material as we can. I was involved a couple of years ago in rewriting the Durham planting ordinance guideline section of the ordinance, and there were a lot of native plant materials that are allowed in that, into those plantings. But one of the biggest reasons is, there is still, as a landscape architect, we know because we specify this, there is still not a robust, dependable supply of native plant material of the size that the ordinance actually requires us to plant. So in other words, it says we have to plant 1,003-gallon shrubs and 500 two-and-a-half-inch caliber trees and that sort of thing. So those native plant materials are not always available to do that because the nursery industry in North Carolina, and we hate going out of state to buy plant materials, the nursery industry in North Carolina has not quite caught up to the, the interest in providing those. So we'll, we'll provide them in as many ways as we can, but we can't commit to providing all native plant materials. But great question. It comes up all the time.
Any other questions? Vice Chair Shigares.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to have to get some clarification from staff. The, what's the exact difference between the RB and the RD density?
Bo Debrinsky, Planning. I, certainly, I don't have the proposed ordinance in front of me, but the RD does allow for 5,000-square-foot lots, whereas the RB is a more traditional, more suburban, much larger lot subdivision. And then I can certainly provide you those, those dimensions, but it's significantly larger.
So the RB would be closer to, as a by right, than what it currently is versus what they're proposing they change it to? And the, and the proposed zoning change now would be more aligned with RD?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And, question, so you've made the commitment to not develop in the floodplain. So is that floodplain area exactly the same amount as what's marked on there as recreation and open space?
I don't know that I can speak that it's exactly, but the recreation and open space is mirrored to match the floodplain that we had the best knowledge of or best information on. So from a practicality standpoint, yes. The recreation and open space is mapped to the floodplain area.
So if it's not, could we get a commitment from the applicant to preserve all of the recreation and open space, not just the part of it that's the floodplain? I mean, it might be like, what, if it's a little, if it's close?
Again, we'll, we'll commit to preserving the recreation and open space that's in the stream buffer down in that corner and the floodplain. The maps that were pulled up are so coarse. I mean, we sometimes get biologists to go out and look at those, and they say the line is actually 200 feet this way or 200 feet that way. But for the time being, what I, what we can commit to is the floodplain and the stream buffer. And that, stream buffers in those area will be preserved and, of course, will be part of the open space and preservation and all the good stuff that goes along with that.
And if this project doesn't occur until after the UDO passes, a commitment to stand by the RB and not the RD?
No, can't, can't do that. And I think, I think there's a lot of complexity about that that still needs to be discussed, because remember, Mr. Debrinsky brought up that it's a, it's a, it's a matter of, it, it, has it been, been annexed and are there utilities available versus has it not been annexed and utilities available? So stay tuned. This is very fluid. It surprised me that the map changed because the map that's still online says RD. So we're probably not done yet.
And I would, I would just like to clarify that if there's a, if, if the applicant is committing to preserving, of course, would have to preserve the stream buffer per the yard, per the UDO. And if they are committing to not developing the floodplain, staff would interpret that as not building in the ROS area, even though when you get out there and do a field study, the line may be a little bit off. We would consider them one and the same.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for the applicant. So at this time, you don't, you can't say you don't know, you don't have any idea what the non-residential development will be on the site?
No, other than it will be 12,000 square feet, and where it will be located, that's actually called out relative to a parcel number and, and that sort of thing. So we'd like it to be something like a daycare center, or, you know, a small bunch of local shops, coffee, that's that sort of thing that would come in there. If, if anybody has the idea for a business and would like to rent some space, we will be happy to talk to them, them tomorrow. But we've kind of left that open a little bit.
And I, I heard that blasting was a concern. Will blasting take place on the site?
We don't know. Blasting is a, is a, is a outcome of, of rock. The neighbors say there's probably rock out there because there's been blasting around there and that sort of thing. What we, what we have talked about pledging, and I'm happy to do this, I've already talked to the clients about this, is if, if any damage to adjacent properties can be connected to blasting on this property, it would be the responsibility of the developer to, to make people whole, to repair those damages, drill them a new well, whatever would be done. Because I think that was the biggest, has been the biggest concern in the neighborhood over the years is wells not, not, not working after blasting. So we're happy to make that as a, as a commitment.
No geotechnical studies have been done on the site yet?
Pardon?
No geotechnical studies have been done on the site yet?
Not yet. Those will be done once we have building locations and we know where the deep utilities are going to be.
I have, concerning the traffic concerns of the citizens, maybe this is for Earlene. So if, if 98 is still considered a highway and it's, the speed limit's 55, what would have to occur to get, you have to petition NC DOT to lower the speed limit and not consider that a highway? And so these people can just, I mean, during rush hour, they're probably not going fast anyway, just make it like a 35 or a 40 all the time, and that would help prevent some of these accidents? What's the process for that?
Earlene Thomas, Transportation. So yes, NC DOT would have to be petitioned for speed reduction, and they would do a speed reduction study evaluation and make the decision on whether or not to lower the speed limit.
Thank you.
I have a question in regards to the petition. Who would start the petition? Would it be the community members? Would it be the city? Would it...
Right. Earlene Thomas, again, Transportation. So yes, the, any, anyone could make that request, the petition. And of course, obviously, the NC DOT would coordinate with the city on any sections within its city limits.
All righty. Commissioners, are we ready to move this case forward? May I have a motion?
Chair, as it relates to case Z2300011, annexation BDG 2300007, Howard property, I make a motion that we move this case forward to City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutwright and seconded by Commissioner Williams to move case Z23-0011-BDG23-007, Howard property, forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigares.
Yes.
Commissioner Cutwright.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Wen.
Yes.
Commissioner Piantek.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Woke.
No.
The motion passes seven to one.
Thank you. We're now moving on to case Z24-0013-1202, Ellis Road. May we have the staff report, please? Do you want these, do you want these other ones back? Can we give it one second?
All right. Hello again, Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigares, and Planning Commissioners. I'm Peyton Burgess, and I'm here once again this time to present Z2413-1202, Ellis Road. The following information summarizes the application. The current zoning is residential rural, and the proposed zoning is residential suburban multifamily with a textual development plan. The existing place type map is mixed residential neighborhood. The request would allow for up to 20 single-family and/or duplex units. The existing zoning is rural residential. The site is immediately adjacent to rural residential industrial light and PDR 7.870. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. The property is currently designated mixed residential neighborhood on the place type map. The proposed zoning was determined to be consistent with the designated place type. The proposal has text commitments, including a write-in and write-out-only access to Ellis Road with a concrete island, a 10-foot shared path along the site fringe, access to Road with a concrete island, a 10-foot shared path along the site frontage, access to Riddle Road that will be as far from the Riddle Road Ellis Road intersection as possible, and have a westbound left turn lane, and the dedication of an additional 10 feet of right-of-way for the frontage of the site along Riddle Road. Two neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with UDO requirements. One was held on January 3rd, 2024 and had nine community members in attendance. The second was held on December 11th, 2024 and had two community members in attendance. No Durham rezoning explorer comments were received in relation to this case. The proposal is consistent with the place type map designation of mixed residential neighborhood. The proposal is also consistent with 13 of 22 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant come forward?
Hello again, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, Dan Jewell, landscape architect with Thompson-Hutton, 2510 Meridian Parkway. We're back here with a project sort of at the opposite end of the spectrum of the one that you, you heard first. This is a, a very modest request to rezone a piece of property that's currently zoned rural residential, which I can only imagine is a remnant zone from years and years and years ago when this was a little less developed area. You noticed from the map that was pulled up that we now have townhouse communities across the street. This is a fairly rapidly growing area. And again, in, in keeping with the goals of the comprehensive plan to create more housing opportunities in appropriate locations, the comp plan now shows this site and this neighborhood to be a mixed residential neighborhood rather than a low-density, one unit per 30,000 square feet, single-family neighborhood that it is, is today. And that's what we are proposing. We are committing to only doing single-family homes and duplexes. These will be small, single-family homes, you know, likely there'll be some of the, using some of the small lot options, duplexes, that sort of thing. You know, it, it's doubtful we can get up to 20 homes on this very small piece of property, only an acre and a quarter. But that's what the RSM district allows at, at this, at this density. So we, we again, we happily will incorporate the requests for the side path, the right-of-way dedication, the driveway restrictions that, that were requested by various staff departments. And we look forward, I will say that the, the property owners are actually the, going to be the developers of this. This is not a speculative venture where somebody has this property under contract and hopes to get it rezoned and then they'll flip it to somebody else. These are local people that have been in Durham for a very, very long time and they just think it's, it's time to look at this corner and put some, some more housing here than, than could be done today. So that is the end of my very brief presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions and, and hope with this simple little application, you can, you can see to move it forward with a positive recommendation to the City Council. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the gallery wishing to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak on this case? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. We are now open for Commissioner discussion and questions. Commissioner Woke.
Hi, I have the same question for this parcel and I feel like your reasoning for not committing to native plantings on the previous one is such a large project. This is a very small project. I feel certain that there are enough natives locally to, to accommodate that particular comprehensive plan policy.
You're right. So I think we'd be happy to commit to the required planting being done with native plant materials. I think at this time, it would probably be limited to street trees. Okay. But I, I know there's at least a dozen street trees out there somewhere that are native plant materials, so happy to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are we ready to move this case forward? May I have a motion, please?
Chair, as it relates to case Z24000131202, Ellis Road, I make a motion that we send this case forward with the associated proffer to City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Good.
It's been moved and seconded to, who did that this time? Not you? I'm sorry, it's been moved and seconded, uh, it's been moved by Commissioner Cutright and seconded by Commissioner Huen to move case Z240131202, Ellis Road, forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeru.
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Huen.
Yes.
Commissioner Piantek.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Woke.
Yes.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have case Z24021 Strauss Drive Townhouses. May we have?
Thank you, Chair Cameron. Andy Leistre, the Planning Department. The following slide summarizes the application. The location is six parcels of land on Strauss Drive, 1801, 1803, 1807, 1809, 1811, and 1850 Strauss Drive. It's currently within the city in the suburban tier. The total acreage of those six parcels is 13.49 acres. The existing zoning is residential suburban 20 and commercial center. The proposed zoning is residential suburban multifamily with a graphic development plan and commercial center with a graphic development plan as well. The applicant proposes up to 95 townhouses to touch row house, multiplex, or apartment units in the RSND portion of the site. The commercial center with a development plan that includes Strauss Drive would permit the existing businesses that front the east side of Strauss Drive and the new residential development to utilize the private street. As stated earlier, the existing zoning is RS20 and commercial center. The proposed zoning is residential suburban multifamily with a graphic development plan and commercial center with a graphic development plan. Surrounding this site is RS20, commercial center, and industrial zoning districts. The current place type designation for the site is transit opportunity area. The proposal is generally consistent with that place type and no change to the place type map would be required. This aerial map shows the general location of the project. It is generally, it is generally located at the southwest quadrant of Miami Boulevard and Andrew Avenue intersection. To the west are single-family residences, to the south is Bethesda Baptist Church, to the east and north are commercial establishments. Here we have a list of notable commitments through graphic and text commitments. Some include 5% income restricted units at 80% AMI for a 30-year period, 70% impervious surface, native species for all new trees, and a donation to Durham Public Schools for Here we have the proposed conditions for the site. The proposal illustrates two access points at the existing connection of Strauss Drive at Andrew Avenue and Miami Boulevard. No connection is proposed for Marley Drive. Strauss Drive is a private street and is the only portion of the proposed zoned CCD. Within the RSND portion of the site, the 95 residential units would be located. The proposed building and parking envelope is proposed outside the repair and stream buffers, but do impact some steep slopes. Tree preservation is proposed in the southern portion of the site, within and outside of those stream buffers. A neighborhood meeting was held in accordance with the UDO requirements on April 3rd, 2024. Seven community members were in attendance. A meeting was also held on January 16th, 2025. Two community members were in attendance. Currently, there are no commitments or comments for this proposal on the Durham rezoning explorer. And lastly, the proposal is consistent with 19 of 24 applicable policies of the comprehensive plan and the proposal is generally consistent with the place type map designation of transit opportunity area. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant come forward, please?
Good evening, Chair Cameron, members of the commission. My name is Marie Farmer. I'm with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, here on behalf of the applicant Prophet Dixon. The team is proud to present this project tonight, which offers a new housing type within close proximity to existing food and retail, a public park, and transit with environmental and income restricted unit commitments. So this request is to rezone six parcels along Strauss Drive at the intersection of Andrew Avenue and South Miami Boulevard that are currently vacant commercial. The total acreage for the property is a little over 13 acres, but as the graphic development plan that you just saw shows, the actual developable acreage is a much smaller portion because of the, the stream buffer and the tree preservation on the southern portion of the site. The current zoning on the site is commercial center and the zoning we are requesting is residential suburban multifamily, which will allow for a townhome development. The request also includes commercial center because we included Strauss Drive, the existing private drive, on the development plan, which technically changes the zoning from commercial center to commercial center with a development plan. But otherwise, there's no proposed change to that parcel as it will continue to serve as access for this site. The place type map designation is transit opportunity area, which describes moderately-sized places found throughout the community at the junction of major transit stops, important for connecting neighborhoods to transit service. The design of these areas should include buildings that are located close together with a mix of uses, easy access to the street, and designed to serve the daily needs of residents. Development of new TOAs should seek to find spaces already served by transit, filling in vacant lots or parking lots, and protecting natural spaces that preserve environmental resources. Our request meets the TOA designation because we are proposing a new residential use immediately adjacent to existing commercial uses, with units close to and fronting the street, a pedestrian crosswalk for easy access to existing transit on Andrew Avenue, all while protecting the most environmentally sensitive portions of the site by clustering the buildings to the north of the stream, reducing the permitted impervious surface, and providing additional tree preservation. So as I had mentioned previously and as you had seen earlier from Andy, we prepared and submitted a graphic development plan with our application that includes a number of graphic and text commitments that exceed the UDO requirements. So because we are located outside of the watershed, 100% impervious is permitted here. We have reduced that to 70%. 20% tree preservation is required. We are committing to 25%. And because of recent changes to the UDO, there are no longer buffers that are required between proposed uses that are the same, so residential next to residential. But because of feedback we received from neighbors during our neighborhood meeting, we have committed to a buffer, that buffer A that you see at the top, highlighted in green, for our neighbors on Marley Drive and Andrew Avenue at their request. We also have a number of key text commitments. We are committing to a maximum of 95 units. Something we wanted to clarify, there are several uses that are proposed on the development plan, including apartments. And the reason for that is because the definition of townhouses in the UDO requires subdivision so that every unit is on an individual lot. If this community is a rental community, we would be seeking to have all of the units on one lot, not subdividing on individual. So we wanted to make sure we added a commitment that all of the townhouses will either be townhouses and meet that UDO definition, or they will be designed to appear like townhouses in that they'll have vertical separations only. So while multifamily apartments is a permitted use, that is only to allow all of the units to be on one lot and not subdivided. There will be variation in appearance throughout the community. Again, the units along Strauss Drive, we committed to those being rear alley loaded with a maximum 25-foot setback along Strauss Drive to create that interactive streetscape along with that pedestrian crosswalk we are providing and the five-foot sidewalk along Strauss Drive. We have several environmental commitments that, including that our stormwater control measure infrastructure will not be located within the stream buffer. All new trees will be native. We have included, in addition to the one-third recreational open space that's required, a minimum of one of the following on the screen being included in our active open space. Again, we're addressing affordability with income restricted units, 5% at 80% AMI for 30 years. They will contain two or more bedrooms and they will be dispersed throughout the community. An important distinction here, too, is that whether the units end up being rental or for sale, we have accounted for affordability. So it does provide, it will, it, it is not just if it's for rent. We are accounting for that for ownership opportunities as well. And we also want to clarify, the calculation for the students generated changed throughout this case. And so we wanted to make sure that we accounted for that. And so we have increased our donation to Durham Public Schools. We initially thought we were decreasing by four students. We are increasing by 10. And so that is, that is the amount that we are accounting for here. We are consistent with 19 out of 24 applicable policies of the comprehensive plan. As you can see, we are consistent with five of those by meeting UDO requirements and 14 of those by exceeding UDO requirements. In terms of our consistency with that transit opportunity place type, we are consistent with four out of the five of those policies. And finally, this rezoning is consistent with the review criteria in the UDO. This proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's compatible with the zoning and conforming uses of nearby property. It will improve the balance of uses in the area by providing a new housing type that will meet demand in Durham. And there is adequate infrastructure available to support the proposed development as this product, uh, project already has sewer on site and is already within city limits. So thank you again for your time and we look forward to answering any questions you may
Sign-up sheet pretty much has the applicant team on here. Is there anyone else? Everybody's applicant over there. All right, let's look on Zoom. I don't think you all want to speak, right? You're good? And there's nobody on Zoom? So we're going to close the public hearing and we're going to open it up for Commissioner discussion and questions. None? Going once, going twice? All right. May I have a motion to move this case forward? You have a question? You have, okay. We're ready to move this case forward. Yes, 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 yes. Motion, thank you.
Chair, as it relates to case Z2400020, oh no, that's not Methodist.
Yeah, you gotta go to the next one.
Sorry.
24.
Chair, as it relates to case Z2400021, Strauss Drive Townhouses, I make a motion that we move this case forward with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutright and seconded by Commissioner Williams to move case Z24021 Strauss Drive Townhouses forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeru.
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Huen.
Yes.
Commissioner Piantek.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Woke.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item, agenda item number eight, committee updates. None? None. Uh, new business? None?
I just have one.
Staff announcements?
Yes, I have one quick announcement. I already mentioned earlier in the meeting about vacancies on the commission, so if there's anybody still watching and you're interested, let the clerk's office know. I also just wanted to let you know that the city and the county, I believe it is actually the county that is running this effort for the Durham Roxborough Rail Trail, and there are some upcoming opportunities for workshops to work on the design and input on that trail. One on Wednesday, February 19th. One on Wednesday, February 19, from 6:30 to 8 at Club Boulevard Elementary, and one on Thursday, February 20, from 6:30 to 8 at Lakeview Secondary School on Dearborn Drive. So, if anybody has any interest, please participate.
Nothing else to come before this commission today, therefore, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.